Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing, approve the agenda. Any questions or changes to the agenda?
And will we accept it?
Second.
I get a motion by Mark Bartus, second by Sean Ryan to accept the agenda in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda tonight is the recognition of outgoing board and commission members. This is actually the first time that we are doing this, and it should have probably been done a long time ago because really the people who dedicate their time to our boards and commissions are valuable to the city council. The hard work that they do for each board and commission is something that we really cherish because obviously we cannot be everywhere all the time. So this little token of our appreciation, we're going to be giving them a certificate, thanking them for serving on the board and commission. I'm going to read off the people that are outgoing, and I notice I think we have Chuck Wan and Aaron Dodge here tonight. So then I will call them up to accept their certificate. And Patrick kind of gave me a little heads up that he wanted us to stand by the clock because I guess we took pictures with Kenny Teets and they saw the New Prague area community at school on there and they took a little ribbing for it. So we'll try to accommodate our press tonight and we'll try to take pictures over here. So, you know, Patrick, it's, Patrick had a, your boss is here, I understand, a lot of pressure under here for Patrick, but, so. So our outgoing boards and commission members, Aaron Dodge, who was our youth representative on the park board, Sharon Brown, served four years on the park board, Jen Atuma, three years on the golf board, Andrea Burkheism, oh, that's a Hardmiser?
Burkhardsmeyer.
Burkhardsmeyer, there you go, thank you. Served four years on the EDA board, and Chuck Wan, I can't believe he's quitting after 16 years on the utility commission. So I think we just have Aaron and Chuck, so I'm going to call up Chuck Wan first, please.
Chuck, for your, in recognition and appreciation for your volunteer service to utility commission in the city, bottom of the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, and previous councils, 16 and a half years. It's been enjoyable. And we have a wonderful staff, I'll tell you what. Our utilities and wonderful to work with, so. Oh, and Mark, too.
Yeah, and Mark. See, Mark, it's not just me. I'd like to call up Aaron Dodge, please.
Aaron, in recognition and appreciation for your volunteer service to the park board in the city of New Prague, I want to thank you.
I don't think we have anyone else here, but we will mail out their certificates. And again, we appreciate all the help that the boards and commissions gives the city council. Without them, we would not function as well as we do. So, thank you again, everyone. Okay, next on the agenda, approving conditional use permit for the temporary housing of families moving forward. Oh, there's Ken.
Moved on, yeah.
Yes. Don't move so fast, I'm an old guy.
All right, I do have a quick PowerPoint to give a summary of the discussion at the planning commission meeting that took place on May 28th. And again, this is a conditional use permit request for a limited duration temporary housing facility for homeless families, and this would be located in the existing home at 305, or structure, at 305 Columbus Avenue North. The applicant is Mayo Clinic Health System, New Prague. Take a look at the overhead. The subject property is outlined in the blue color. Queen's Court directly to the north is a darker blue indicating the zoning of medium-density residential. You'll notice that's the only differing zoning in the whole area. Everything else is actually zoned RL single-family residential, including Mayo Clinic Hospital, St. Wenceslas Church and School, and then also obviously the single-family homes to the west, south, or, excuse me, to the east, south, and southeast as well. At the planning commission meeting on May 28th, the planning commission did review the request. We did have a public hearing that was required to be held. We notified within 350 feet, and I did want to note also that some open houses and informational presentations were also given to some property owners by the applicant as well as those that were notified formally for our public hearing that we held on the 28th. We did have seven people that signed the roster for the public hearing. Public comment was only received from Mary Higgins on behalf of the applicant. So we did not have any other public comment other than from the applicant. Ms. Higgins did submit a list of 16 signatures of residents and property owners noting that they had their questions answered and they had no objections to the proposal, and I want to note that those signatures are in your packet for review tonight. And they signed those, that information after having their information presented to them about the Families Moving Forward program. Again, that was arranged prior to the public hearing by Mary Higgins on behalf of the applicant. The background once again would allow up to 12 weeks in a year to have five families at a time, no more than 16 people in the property, in the building, to utilize the main floor. There are five bedrooms on the main floor, two bathrooms and two living areas, as well as the basement and the kitchens. That was a request that was on hand. Ultimately, the planning commission did recommend approval, and they recommend approval of the attached resolution, which would grant conditional use permit C2 2014 that would allow the limited duration temporary housing facility for homeless families, and again, should reiterate that this is for families only, to locate in the existing building at 305 Columbus Avenue North, located in the RL 750 single-family district as proposed by Mayo Clinic Health Systems. And there are eight conditions and eight findings listed in that resolution. Let's actually go over a few photos here for the benefit of the council and anyone else in attendance. On the overhead is a picture of the home. Directly to the south is a parking lot that's used by the Mayo Clinic employees. You can see the hospital located just to the west of the proposed site. Once again, Queen's Court to the north, and single-family homes to the east and southeast, and then St. Wences. You can just see the ball fields in the air photo there with the church and the private school also located there. View of the home from Columbus Avenue North. You can see it has a typical appearance of a single-family home in the area. Looking from the intersection of Columbus Avenue North and Second Street Northeast, again, looking at the parking lot for Mayo Clinic, and looking towards the northeast. This picture was shown, or taken to show the existing fencing slash screening and plantings that are already located between the property and the single-family home directly to the east. View of the back of the property and structure, you have the garbage enclosure which is already in place on the property, kind of a three slash four-season porch off the main area which could be used by the program participants during their stay, and then the backyard This picture shows how close in proximity the 38-unit Queen's Court apartment building is directly to the north. Moving in the interior of the building, this is one of the two main-floor living areas. This is actually be located in the western portion of the home, the older area of the homes. One of the original living rooms, obviously, that'll be used once again as a living room for the program. Be the second living room common gathering area in the, what I call the addition, the newer part of the structure. The porch is off the rear patio door located here that we looked at a few pictures ago. Moving down to the basement, we have a picture of the kitchen basement area that will be used by the volunteers to prepare and serve meals to the program participants. Just a picture of an example bathroom on the main floor. And then, this is a picture of three of the rooms on the main floor. There's a total of five, but three of the rooms in the newer part of the structure have this vanity area with a sink included in them for obviously some convenience factor for the participants that may be in those bedrooms. That's all I have for the staff report, and I can open it up to any questions or comments that the council may have.
Any questions?
I have several, actually. And I don't know if maybe Mary could answer these a little better if she wants to come up, too. No, Ken, I have some questions for you, too.
Okay.
Mary Higgins, or isn't, or Mary Klimp, I don't, it doesn't matter, either one of you. Originally, the, was the application for 14 people and then we changed that to 16?
Yes, actually Beacon increased the number to 16.
Okay. Beacon did, and they're located in, where's their, in St. Paul, or?
They're in St., I think, believe their head offices are in St. Paul.
In St. Paul, okay. The, and Ken, you can ask, I'll ask this question to both of you. Under the criteria for granting conditional use permits, letter D, the use in the opinion of the city council is reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and to the existing land use. Could either one of you explain how that's benefiting the city of New Prague or meeting the overall needs? My understanding is this is drawing people from both Scott County and Carver County, and if I read this right, perhaps even if there's overflow issues for, from Ramsey or Hennepin or Anoka or any of the other counties, that they could be sending people down as well to fill those beds or rooms. Is that correct?
I didn't say that. I just said that I couldn't rule it out because I know that the Hennepin County program accepted a family from Belle Plaine at one point, so I can't, it's not in my position to say that that wouldn't happen.
Whose position would that be in, though, isn't it?
That would be up to Beacon, to the Families Moving Forward staff.
So are they going to be running that, or is there someone local that will be monitoring this? I mean, I guess I thought that you were kind of heading this group, that would, that would be the representative in this area for Beacon?
We are just three of 16 churches that are working in this program, so we're just a local part of it. It actually has to have some structure beyond the local churches to help coordinate the whole thing.
Okay. And then the conditional use is for 12 weeks, so who's monitoring that? Is anybody, Ken, from the city watching to make sure that those weeks are being monitored and that they're not extending them or using?
Yeah, we will be provided a schedule, and actually they indicated the schedule for 2014 had been developed. When the one for 15 is developed, we will be provided a copy of that.
Also, I noticed that, is there a reason that the upstairs is not being utilized in that house and that they're all on the one level?
It's not needed for the size of the program. There's adequate space on the first floor and in the basement kitchen area.
Okay. I took a tour of it, I don't, it seems pretty tight if you had the extra space, but the, what would constitute a serious offense? I can see, I see that the conditional use permit would be in place as long as there's any serious offenses that take place on that. What would, maybe Mark could better answer that. What would a serious offense be, and who's going to determine what a serious offense is?
We didn't specifically define any particular circumstance to be located there. You know, we could have, I suppose, specified a felony offense or something to that level, but really, ultimately, it's up to the council to determine what that might be. You have the ultimate authority, per our conditions, to basically have a revocation hearing if that were ever to get to the point where you felt it was a problem, where we have documented police cases of, you know, I don't even know specifically what could happen because there just hasn't been a history of that in this type of program. So we didn't, we didn't put any specific issue that might occur there, whether it be anything from assault or, you know, anything to that level. We just didn't, didn't want to specify it other than noting that it could come back to you as a council for a revocation hearing, should you determine that, if you determine that you thought there were some serious type of police actions happening there.
And we would be notified from Mark that, I mean, I don't know how we'd read, unless we read about it in the paper, but would we be notified if there was some type of police call there, or, or how could we put that in to make sure that that does happen?
Well, I, my vision of this would be prior to anything like that, again, trying to define what serious is, but I would, I, my intention would be to be in contact with Mary Klimp before anything to make her aware of it, and I would hope allow Mayo to make the decision if they're going to continue to allow their property to be used for this And again, like I said, you know, in my, in my mem, you know, frequent occurrences of some things, we will definitely be talking and, and come to a decision, or, you know, I would inform her so she could make a decision on what they would, because I, you know, I'm confident Mayo, nor do the three area churches, want a black eye on this deal at all.
Right. Well, I'm sure none of us do, but.
And that is one of the positives of this program, that it's not up to us to individually be screening. Beacon will be screening for criminal background checks, and no one with a criminal background will be admitted to the program. So it also stands that if something happens while they're a member of the program and they have a criminal record, they would be excluded from the program. And we're, we're also relying on that kind of policing by Beacon to assure that it runs as intended.
Okay. Well, can you see where the fear comes in, though, being run out of St. Paul, that maybe even the local contingent of volunteers wouldn't necessarily know, or be reported, or this would be reported to? I mean, there just seems to be a little gap in the chain to get to council or wherever if there was issues.
I, I understand that. I also know that as Chief Osceba said, Mayo is doing this because we feel there's a need in the community, want to connect to the community, but we also don't want to be a burden to the community. So if it was a problem, we would have to revoke our willingness to participate also. At this point in time, with the three churches that have stepped up and the over 100 volunteers that are participating, we plan to stay very close in touch. I am directly across the street, and we'll keep my eye on it as well as everyone else that's involved.
Is there, is there a number of New Prague families that you're anticipating helping, or is there some in the program already, or are we just importing from Carver County and around the metro area?
The program has just been in operation since May 11th, and they've had three families so far. None of them happen to have been from New Prague. But I think we, sometimes you think regionally, and you don't think it's only to serve New Prague people. It's, 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 it's,
I just, after reading everything that Ken put together and the planning commission okayed it, I have no problem with it at all. I mean, I don't have any reservations. And they seem to have answered Sean's questions quite well, too, so.
I just, you know, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't feel real confident in it. I think that it can be a slippery slope. We've seen it change several times already. Just because there hasn't been a situation in this program somewhere else doesn't necessarily mean that it's... If it were serving families in New Prague, I'd be all for it. But the fact of the matter is, is we seem to be pulling people from Carver County, Waconia, Watertown, Belle Plaine, perhaps even Hennepin or Ramsey County, based on what this says, if there's overflow needs and beds are free here, and we're importing metro area problems that aren't specifically helping the residents of New Prague. And I go back to criteria for granting the conditional use permit, item D, and I question, is this reasonably related to the overall needs of the city? And I don't necessarily see that, but I'm just one vote, so.
Sean, may I address that concern?
Sure.
Put yourself in a homeless family's position. Let's assume that you, Lori, and your kids are living in your car. Now, could they house you? They probably could. But there's a reason why they don't have people from New Prague there. How would you feel if you were one of those people, destitute, looking for housing, and now all the people in New Prague that are serving you because you're at that house, how would you feel that now, all of a sudden, the whole town knows that you're destitute? So they don't get them from New Prague. New Prague residents could go to some of these others elsewhere, and they'd have some anonymity. I think I pronounced it right. There's a good reason for that.
Well, I guess this is more of a county issue, you know? If Scott County and Carver County don't have homeless shelters, it just seems to me that maybe Mary and her group should be working with the county commissioners to form this. And it should be located in the county seat, next to the government center and all the other government facilities on a county basis. That's my personal feeling. And second, and I realize that bad things can happen to very good people. And any one of us could end up in a situation because of a lot of different reasons where we're without a place to live. I feel confident enough in my neighborhood that I have, well, first of all, I have family that I'm sure would take me in to help me get off my feet. And if I didn't, if I was out of state or something, I feel confident that people in my neighborhood would also put me up, because I certainly would with my neighbors, if they needed months to stay at their house.
A lot of these people aren't like you.
Yeah, they don't have...
No, I understand that. I understand that. But again, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that we seem to be importing homelessness into New Prague. And I just think it's a real slippery slope allowing that situation. And I really feel like this is just the start of it. And what's next? We're going to have a group that wants to put a teen runaway center here in town, or a halfway house for drug users, or... I mean, there's a lot of different things that can come down the pipe. And I just, this is a... I'm a compassionate guy, I am, but I just don't, if this were helped, again, I would be all for it if it was helping residents of New Prague. But to import people from around the metro area, I'm just not for.
Yes. Sean, we're all...
One vote.
We're all connected somehow. We help people in La Sora County, Scott County, Carver County. They help us. Look at the way the county operates. They're trying to get all the communities together. A little different, but we're all part of humanity, and if we can help somebody else...
Dave, you know what? You're absolutely right. And, you know, I don't want you to think that I'm not somehow a compassionate guy. I just think, and I've talked to many, many people on this subject, since the newspaper articles in the paper, a lot of homeowners in town, and they all have reservations on it. So, I mean, they do. And I think the overall majority is. I don't know if you guys are hearing that or have gone out and asked people, but I have. And I guess I'm their voice, so.
What's their main reservation, then?
Again, it's the importing of homelessness into town. A lot of people spend great deals of money, as you know, and our research has shown that 70% of New Prague people work outside of the county. They choose to live this far out to escape a lot of the problems. They come to New Prague because it's a well-maintained, beautiful city with great school system, low crime, and they can escape part of the metro, the big city problems. That was a comment that came from somebody that I talked to. And they pay great expense to drive 45 or 50 miles to downtown Minneapolis every day with hours away from their families at gas three and $4 a gallon, hundreds of dollars a month for a quality of life down here. And this is, while in the context of this conditional use permit, there probably isn't a large degree of problems that can occur, but it's a slippery slope that, what's next? And that's their feeling. And there's some fear out there. There is. And there's, you know, there's misunderstanding. And it came up really quick. You know, this wasn't like, at least, you know, it broke a month or so in the paper, and then it was like, let's go, 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 and get this thing done. And there's a lot of questions that I don't feel were answered. I'm a little worried that there isn't a real solid local control, that it's being controlled by this organization out of St. Paul. And it just doesn't feel real good, to me at least. And I'm one vote, so I, you know, I mean, it's, you guys have said your piece. I needed to say mine. If you guys don't feel that way, you can vote the opposite.
I think, being a conditional use permit, and I think, you know, Ken has stressed that, that, you know, if there is some issues down the line, we still have the authority to stop it. And I agree, there probably is fear, but there's always fear of the unknown. And I think that's something that, you know, everyone, you know, has. I mean, I've had people come up to me, majority of the people have been in favor of it. I guess, you know, if you look at, if the city can only do things for the city, you know, then that's the wrong way a government looks at it. I mean, you look at the Peace Center there, they just don't give food out to people in New Prague. You know, they give out to the region. And that's kind of the way I look at it. And I think, David, you brought that up when we were talking, is that when the Peace Center opened up, there were a lot of people uneasy about that. And I think that has turned into be a very valuable asset to the city of New Prague.
Queen's Court was one. That was tremendous amount of antagonism towards it. And it turns out, as you said, to be one of the nicer facilities in New Prague. I don't think there's anybody that's against it anymore.
But I think just having that capability of being a conditional use, having, still have that ultimate say if something doesn't go right, it's not like we're giving the okay that now we have no more control. We still have control over the situation. And that's the way I look at it. Go ahead, Mary.
Ryan, would you like us to come back after our first experiences, first couple of weeks or few weeks, and either share with the council, or I could meet with you individually, just to fill in the blanks, to give you more detail about what our experience truly is?
I think that'd be great. I think it'd be helpful to the others in the community that have voiced their opposition to the...
I'd be glad to do it with the commission, or meet privately with yourself.
Well, I think maybe it'd be nice, since we're on TV, if you maybe came back here and addressed the council. I'm sure the rest of the council would like to hear that as well. But again, you know, I'm just, I'm speaking for the people that are against it, and there are many in town. So I don't, you know, the fact that Chuck has heard many positive things is nice to hear, but again, it's swaying against the favor.
I'd welcome the opportunity to talk about what's our first few weeks really like.
That'd be great. That'd be beneficial.
None of those people came to the planning commission meeting where they could voice their opinion?
I saw several there, but they didn't speak.
Oh.
But, well, it doesn't matter. I was going to say, I talked to many people at Chuck's Memorial Day party, and they voiced their concern, so.
I must have been missing.
And you invited them?
Not anymore. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead, Mark, you have a say something?
Yeah. I got about three things. The first one is that if there are many people out there concerned, I don't feel sorry for them because they had their opportunity to voice their opinion, and they didn't use it. So, to me, when you say there's many people that are opposed to it, there's many people that don't have any details, so they're naturally suspicious. That's the way I interpret that. Secondly, if they have a background check run on them, that's 10 times more surveillance, or whatever word you want to put on it, than we have on anybody that moves into this town that can just go to a realtor, buy a house, and move in the next day that could be a serial killer, for all we know. And if Mark Vosseipka talked to many of the people out there, or many, whoever he talked to that was in contact with this group, and he says it's okay after 30 years on the police force, that's what we pay him to do. So, again, I'm not saying that something won't happen, but anybody can be struck by lightning in a storm. So, I mean, it's about as a well-run program, I think, that you can have for this type of thing. And I see no reason why, especially the way the city of New Prague is looked after, it's kind of a welcoming community, there's no reason we can't try it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I just want to say that I agree with Mark on a lot of what he said. And if anybody read all this that Ken on it put together, I think they would have a different view, you know, just talking about it and things. It just answers everything in this what Ken put together, so.
Okay.
Still think there's questions. It doesn't answer everything. I mean, we couldn't even get, it's new. I mean, there's questions out there that, for example, Mark, let's talk about Mark's comment about the background check. This is being done by the Beacon group, is that correct, or is that by you? Do they contact you to do the background check?
It was being done by Beacon.
Okay. And could you maybe shed some light on that a little bit? What actually is being done? I mean, is it a...
Well, in talking with, and I don't remember, do I have the name in here in my memo? Okay, find my memo. Right here. Yeah, I don't have her name, but I spoke with the Director of Housing and Program Operation. They basically would use the same sites, websites that we would use to conduct back...
They have access to police websites?
They have access to public records.
Records, okay.
By using the, we call it MNSIS, but it's a court web base where you can go on, type in somebody's name, and it'll show you statewide if they've been charged with crimes and convicted of different things. We also have the BCA, Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, to run background checks. They do that by, they, of course, have to pay for those checks where we don't.
Are they using that, though, from what you said, the BCA?
Yes.
It doesn't state that here in the memo, but...
Yeah, they're both public record sites. And the only thing it doesn't show is things that are currently on the public website. If you, if someone is arrested for a crime a week ago, it's probably not going to be in there, and it's not going to show on the public record until it has been adjudicated one way or the other. You also won't find, obviously, juvenile records where the site, it's the same site, but I have greater access to it. I can see it. I can see all of that stuff going around, except juvenile. I can't even see juvenile.
Well, one of the things that worried me is that one of the volunteers is up all night long. There's always somebody up. And if they're so safe, why is that? Why do they feel a need for somebody to be up all night long?
Reassure people who have qualms about the program, I imagine.
Okay.
I just want to make one final comment from my, you know, to think that New Prague does not have these issues in our community is kind of naive. I mean, we do have homeless. We do have people who starve. We do have drug problems. We, you know, Mark can attest to that.
And I'd be more than happy to help those individuals.
Yes, but again, I mean, I just don't, if someone is looking at this, saying that it's going to bring a different type of person into New Prague, we, and Mark did it very well, saying that, you know, we really don't do background checks when people move into New Prague. And we shouldn't. You know, that's just the nature of being in America. You have the right to live where you choose, and you can't have someone tell you no. So, but that's the last, I would say that. And so, any other questions or comments?
I'll move, we accept it.
I'll second.
Okay. I got a motion to accept a conditional use permit, second by Mark Bartusik, second by Pat Scripture. Any other final comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Okay, passes 4-1. And Mary, I would really appreciate it if you would be so kind to come back after the, both Marys, if you'd come back and kind of share with us the experience, because I think that, like Sean said, being on TV might help, but also it, I think, would help a lot of our unknowns going forward. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, is Patty taking this one?
Before you, you have proposed amendment to the ordinance of 5210. In September of 2013, the council adopted Section 5210 to city code relating to sanitary sewer charges. Since implementation in February of 2014, we've had numerous calls in regards to residents, regards to this ordinance. And what it states is, "New accounts, builders, and landlords shall be billed using their actual monthly water consumption until the next sewer collection period of November through January, and then shall be billed using their three-month winter average." Staff is recommending that the following amended language in Section 52.10c follows, "New accounts, builders, and landlords shall be billed using their actual monthly water consumption, up to but not to exceed the citywide residential three-month November-through-January average water consumption, plus the monthly base fee. Until the next sewer calculation period, November through January, and then shall be billed using their three-month winter water average." Current averages right now stand at 4,100 gallons, and then plus the monthly base fee of $10.52. Both of those are subject to change per the city council that we review every year. We feel that this recommendation, should it be approved by the council, would help us solve a lot of issues that we're having with new customers, primarily new builds that are coming in New Prague, and we're starting to see more of that now with the new housing. People that are putting down new sod, seeding new lawns, filling new pools, what we're running into is they can run up, you know, 50, 80,000 gallons of water on a new lawn, and therefore, they're billed actual sewer cost on that of $15.55 per thousand. So it gets to be a gigantic bill if we hold them to that kind of billing system. We feel that this amendment should alleviate those issues and allow those people to consume that amount of water during the, typically just the summer build season here, until they establish their new sewer rate in the November-through-January timeframe. And then going forward, it won't affect them should they have to water heavily again the following year or whatever, because they'll have already established that base fee or that average. We just feel that this would really help out a lot of those customers, and we've been fielding a lot of those calls with the new building that's been happening here. And we feel that that was, maybe we missed the point there a little bit when this was originally drafted.
Just a little side note to this. Is there any appeal process to this? Because obviously, when the new formula came into effect, I had, mainly as the senior citizens of the community that say, well, you know, I have, majority of my family comes in town over the holidays, and I'm getting hit with a higher usage where the rest of the, you can look at my rest of the year, and I, is there an appeal process, or is it something that you guys review and, you know, Patty, I know you feel the same calls, because...
Yeah. You know, the only ones that we do allow them to appeal is if they have a leak. Because otherwise, you find that a lot of people have all other kind of excuses as to why their water was high those months. So, we try to keep everybody as fair as possible. If they do give us a call and say, hey, you know what, I had a leak, we'll say, did you get it fixed? If you did, did you have a plumber? Do you have any proof? You need to write us a letter. And that all goes on file. And then we reevaluate the sewer amount.
Okay.
Ultimately, that answer, that if it goes to the utility staff, I've had homeowners appeal to me to take a look at it. And ultimately, if they disagree, they'd ultimately have a right to appeal it to the council in that end. But in response to yours, just talking about what Patty said, is that, you know, that ends up being a usage decision. And when we went through all of the different options, whether you purely bill based on water consumption every single month, or whether we try to find, you know, the three lowest months typically, you can't just adjust for a situation that somebody has, somebody come live with them, or you have guests for the holidays. It's based on that usage time period. And either you use that time period, or you use a different time period, or you change the formula. But we don't get to adjust it on a case-by-case basis unless we're really trying to deal with something that really does entail a loss or a leakage situation that runs into a fairly significant amount.
No, and I agree. I just didn't know what the, you know, situations, you know, how you handle those situations. I mean, I basically handled it as, you know, this is the formula we use, and it's evaluated every year. We feel we, you know, every city does it differently. And using the three months that we are using, on average, for the majority of the people is the least usage, so it made sense, so.
And as we've seen that, I don't think the usage, whether you use the factor that we're doing now with November, December, January, or whether you did it based on pure water consumption, the primary issue comes down to is the dollar amount that's being billed for a base fee and the amount per thousand gallons to pay for our new wastewater plant that went in in 2009, 2010. That's really what's driving the issue. It's not so much the underlying factor that drives it, it's the rate that's being paid relative to that.
Right. And I think most people now, through the education process, do understand that why the rate is the way it is. And we will, with the refinancing, it should be stabilized now in the future, so. But, no, that was just, I didn't mean to get off on a sidebar.
Some cities, they will do the average, and then if you go below the average, that's what you pay. So, there are different ways to...
When you say below...
But everybody does it so different.
Right.
Right.
But that is like an optional kind of a thing that some cities use for that reason that you were talking about.
I didn't want to sidetrack us, but I guess I kind of did. But, any other questions in regarding changing the language in Section 5210?
Like in November, December, and January, will they be paying the actual, then?
Yes.
That's not real clear in that verbiage.
That's what it would be.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Then I guess I'll make a motion to amend the language.
Second.
I got a second by Dave Brusich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you. Nice to see you two up and getting along at the table together. That's very nice.
First time for everything.
Okay, next on the agenda, consider the amendment to personnel policy provision on promotion. Mike, are you taking this one?
It seems like we've been involved in modifying a number of these pieces in the personnel policy. But if you recall, from the special meeting that you had on May 15, 2014, there was some discussion in the wording in this provision of the personnel policy. I did review it with the city attorney's office, and after discussion and review, we developed some revised language in an attempt to provide a little greater discretion within the council decision-making role. Mary Jo handed out the red line copy. We had intended that to be in your packet. You ended up with a black and white copy, so I apologize that you couldn't quite see what was new. But hopefully, the piece that she's passed out tonight, basically, it's the addition of the last sentence there with a slight revision in the previous sentence with some minor wording that really didn't change the intent of that, but it was more housecleaning. The last piece really gives the council some greater latitude as we take a look at dealing with the promotion, as to whether we just go right to the next nearest step on the pay grade that they're going into from where they're coming from, versus whether we've got some authority and discretion based on taking a look at various items, including but not limited to education and prior employment experience of the individual being promoted as part of the process. So, I think it's an improvement in the language and gives us greater latitude. Council still has to make the final choice in the end.
Any questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the...
I'll move, second.
Motion by Mark Bartu, no, motion by Dave Brusich, seconded by Mark Bartusik. If there's no further other comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes. Next. Mike, you're going to take this one?
Yes, I will. Sergeant Garice would have been here tonight to answer any question, however, he's on vacation today and out of state, or returning from out of state, so he wasn't able to be with us. But on February 18, I gave you a bit of an overview pending possible process to consider with the retirement this year of Police Chief Vosseipka. At that meeting, it was your decision to not conduct an external search, but to try to take a look at it internally and promote from within, if at all possible. Subsequent to that, we did advertise the opening internally. Sergeant Garice was the only applicant. You held a special meeting on May 15, 2014. I think the feeling that night, or at least the direction I received, is that you were inclined to want to appoint Sergeant Garice as a chief, subject to working through some of the concerns that I have addressed within my memo. In here, my recommendation, coupled with, I think, where you're at in the process, is the consideration in the appointment, promotion and appointment of Mr. Garice from Police Sergeant to Chief of Police. police sergeant to chief of police. That'd be effective Monday, September one. The salary or compensation would be to the, basically, step four of the city's two thousand fourteen compensation plan. If you recall, that was an area that you directed me to go back and do some research on and take a look at, and was able to work with Jim to, I believe, bring it in at the level that is acceptable, or I believe is acceptable to you. As you take a look at that, while we might normally, would have gone to step three, recommending step four, obviously, his desire was quite a bit different than that, a little bit higher, but with his specific years of experience, twenty-six-plus within the department, and the extensive technology knowledge that he has of our computer operations, and the interaction with Scott County that runs the whole entire system is extremely beneficial and might likely not have come with another outside candidate that we have authorization to use the police vehicle that we have for the chief's position. One of the transitionary issues is obviously Sergeant Garice is a member of the police union with the city, as we have seven officers and the one sergeant that are members of the union, and so in taking a look at this, where he is not currently an exempt employee, he is entitled to overtime for anything over forty hours in a, in a work week. He has asked for consideration for payment of accrued vacation leave, compensatory time and holiday pay, as determined on August thirty-first, which would be the last day of employment as a sergeant before he would leave the police union to become the chief on September one, where he would be tax-exempt and not eligible for some of those same items that he's entitled to under the union contract. I can give you a range of what that might be. The difficulty is, is that I don't know exactly what vacation he's going to use between now and then, what compensatory time he might earn between now and then, or what he might use. I think all of the holiday time is that there's nothing additional between now and then, except Fourth of July, which would be calculated into that, and so what he's asking for is that we basically clear the deck in the transition from being a current member of the police union to an exempt employee as now a member of the management staff, assuming you, you take a look at that, that could be somewhere in the range of between nine to ten thousand dollars is what that amounts to, to take care of all those items. His, under the union contract, he's eligible for vacation on his employment anniversary date, which I believe is October, so he has a certain amount on the books right now that hasn't been used. There's a certain amount of compensatory time that instead of being paid as overtime, is accrued, that would need to be cleaned up because he's no longer eligible for compensatory time as a police chief or as an exempt employee, and then there's some holiday pay in the book. Abilities to pay that, Mark, is calculated and had money in his departmental budget for some of that. The transition with a reduced wage and/or benefits with PRA in that would provide enough of a savings to compensate for that, so I believe there's enough dollars in the PD budget to take care of that. We also have some of those same payouts for police officers twice a year under the union contract, there's abilities to pay out some of the vacation stuff, compensatory time is able to be carried up to a certain level before it has to be paid out, and then they're also paid for their holiday time, depending on whether they work that or not. The promotional appointment is subject to a one-year probation. I identify in seven as that the position is exempt and no longer a union position, and as such, no longer would accrue any of the union benefits effective September one and beyond. I summarize a little bit of his background that I think gives you a bit of an overview, has his associate's degree in law enforcement from the Alex area VOTEC, I believe, and the next consideration we have, there's the Technical College, or it's a change in the, in the name, he just happened to have been there a number of years ago when it was still the VOTEC. He's had the CLION, the Command Academy training for supervisors. He's got a total of twenty-nine years of service experience with Cyrus Kensington, La Sura, and New Prague. The last twenty-six-plus years of that has been with the City of New Prague since October of eighty-seven, eighteen-plus years as a police officer, and eight-plus years as a sergeant, and then he's worked in a number of different capacities within that department. So, based on those experiences, training, education, and knowledge, recommending Sergeant Garice be promoted and appointed chief effective September one.
Any questions?
I'm wondering what the review of comparable compensation for other area police chiefs, what did that show?
I looked at cities between five and ten thousand, five and fifteen thousand, and then specifically in an immediate thirty to sixty miles around us. Our pay grade as of right now, subject to the final comp plan coming back, is we have a very adequate pay range for our chief of police. Be happy to share any of those details with you if you'd like to see that, but it was like three major areas that I kind of looked at, but I would tell you, we offer a very, very competitive wage for this position within our organization. And so by putting him at step four, he has four more years to progress through the ranks before he would reach top pay grade.
Okay, any other questions? I guess I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Garice as the new chief of police effective nine-one.
Second.
Seconded by Sean Ryan. Any other further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five-zero. Now it's official, Mark, we only have a few more months to have fun with you.
I think it was referred to on TV tonight on Channel Four as the Silver Tsunami is hitting police departments across the state with, I think, City of Minneapolis lost forty-one police officers in the month of May due to retirement, following another twenty-two or twenty-nine the previous month, so the issue is really relative to, as we've talked in previous discussions, changes by the state of Minnesota in the PRA retirement plan for law enforcement officers, and so that's why you're seeing a number of early, early outs in the law enforcement world.
They got the silver part right, didn't they, Mark? Okay, next on the agenda, sergeant's position on the, in the police department.
As a result of the action you just took, we also internally identified and advertised internally and took applications, assuming this occurred, to backfill the police sergeant position from internal as well. Out of the seven police officers, we have two of them applied and were interviewed. Mark can describe a little bit more of the process that they used, but we had some outside interviewers, along with city staff, that interviewed the two internal applicants. End result is that through that committee, and with Mark's blessing as well, that basically Tim Applin, one of our police officers, be the next promotie to sergeant. It would carry the same effective date as the police chief appointment, September one, because it's kind of like a snowball rolling downhill. The compensation or salary would be to a step three of our two thousand fourteen compensation plan. As I noted in my memo, at this point, we've not settled the two thousand fourteen pay grades for sergeant or police officer, so it's difficult to tell you at this point, other than showing you as part of the previous item that you had, is that assuming we're able to settle that union contract for two percent, then it would be as you see on the compensation plan in front of you. If you end up settling something else, then it would be a different number ultimately for that position. He currently, police officer Applin is at step seven. He has an anniversary review here this next month in June, which I would expect that he would attain, and so the next nearest step would be to step three under the sergeant's pay grade, which is what I'm recommending. Probational appointment also is subject to a period of one year. His summary as well is that he has an associate's degree in law enforcement from Alexandria Technical College, they called it VOTEC, and Jim's term now Technical College with him. He's got thirteen years of law enforcement experience with the Waterville PD, the Sherburne County Sheriff's Department, and the Montgomery and New Prague Police Departments. He's been with us eight years since about June of two thousand six, so, and then he's also served in a number of other capacities through his law enforcement experience, but Sergeant Garice and, and the committee, and I also would recommend that he be appointed sergeant effective September one.
And he's in agreement of that step?
Well, he actually requested higher, but in taking a look at it, as I recommended to you, is that, under the policy, the intent is, is to move to the next nearest step on the pay grade up above this, closest to, to where they're coming from. At this point, I don't have any additional qualifying items that, that I know that would cause me to recommend to go to a higher step, and so...
Okay.
There also hasn't been, as I did some checking in this process, is that we haven't had a lot of internal promotions and that, but that's the language, and I, I agree at this point, that as he gains years of service, you'll see that he'll move up the, the pay grade, and so that separation from where he would be a little bit over the top step as a police officer will progress in the next five steps that he has in the coming years.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Who, who were the people that were on the committee?
Mark, you want to?
The three people that interviewed, the sergeant candidates, were Sergeant Garice, Al Bezek, retired from Savage Police Department, and then Lieutenant Randy Hofstedt from the Prior Lake Police Department. I chose them, I respect their opinion, you know, Al, Al lives here, respect his opinion. They, I've used them in the past, and it's worked out well.
Okay. Any other comments?
I move we accept the...
Second.
...recommendation for sergeant.
Okay, I got a motion by Mark Bartuszek, seven technical, by Dave Bruszek. Any other further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five-zero. Now, obviously, then we would be having a police offer...
We'll now move to advertise externally for a police vacancy.
Okay. Now, would that also be something, Mark, that that committee would probably be involved in, in the interview, or is that more just you and Sergeant Garice?
Right, I normally put that together for promotional type things.
Okay.
But no, there will be an interview panel to interview the, the candidates, or some of, obviously, the, the, probably the bottom, or the top ten candidates, or whatever, as right now, I don't, you know, obviously, my, in my opinion, or my intention would be that Sergeant Garice and Officer Applin would be part of that, and then I was going to leave it up to Jim to probably get three more people from, again, law enforcement, community kind, as somebody that we can trust and respect their decision-making, and that they're doing it for, you know, for the better of the City of New Prague, and, but I don't know who that would be at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And obviously, if, you know, one of the council members, I believe, would want to participate, that would be a possibility too.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda, Ken, are you going to kind of give us an update on the...
I really don't have much to add to the memo, other than we did get a draft of the...
Okay.
Pool assessment and the survey. Some final things to finish up on the assessment would be just verification of some conditions out there, and then they're actually putting together some example layouts of what could be done with the existing site, and then what components could be included in a, a new aquatic facility, and additionally, the survey that was drafted, we've started to review that internally, so we just want to give that a better once-over before we bring that to you guys, but I can assure you, the cost has not gone down in the appraisal of the work that needs to be done to the existing pool, so be reassured it will not be a small number.
When you said survey, you referring to the one that was done for the baseball field, or for that whole area?
No, I'm talking a survey of the community residents that we will be sending out after you guys get a chance to take a look at that.
Okay. We, you think we'll have something for the next meeting?
We certainly should.
Okay, sounds good.
Wasn't too far off, but...
Okay. Any questions at all? If not, we can move on, there are no action need to be required. Consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, I was kind of wondering on the invoices that are being paid, unallocated, it has League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, and then it's property and casualty insurance in there, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, is, that's where it's supposed to be in unallocated?
That's just, it's budgeted for in the unallocated part of the budget.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Pat?
Nope, that's, I just was curious about that.
Any other questions?
Tried to look at the budget, but I didn't see it in there.
If not, I guess I'll look a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by Pat Scripture. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Miscellaneous. Bruce, you have anything?
No.
Mark?
No.
Okay, Glenn?
The pool is set to be open on June eighth, just to let everybody know. We've taken care of some of the fixes that were a concern as far as rough edges on the pool, things like that, so that's done. We ordered an ADA lift that will, if we decide to move it someplace else, we can take it and move it someplace else, so that hopefully will be in before the pool opens, is what we're told will happen, so hopefully, that's the case. Mark had brought up about the survey for the baseball field, I talked to him today, and they have kind of a draft put together at this point. They're kind of cleaning up the edges, so he called it, and hopefully, we'll have something final yet this week on the baseball field, so...
Okay, and there's a meeting, what, June ninth?
Yes.
Where do you have your meetings, conference room?
I'm at the conference room at City Hall.
Okay.
Five o'clock on June ninth.
Okay.
Five, you said?
Yes.
Anything else, Glenn, that's it?
That's it.
Ken?
Nothing.
Okay. Mary Jo? Okay. Do you have anything, Mike?
Uh, no, just real quick, in your packet was the newspaper article that Conagra and Miller Millian handled the handoff between the two parties. Bruce, our guys read out the utilities, you did the lease at the last meeting, so now we begin the new transition with the new, new company.
Yep. Looking forward to it. Okay. Pat, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was wondering, do we have anything on the compensation study?
Not anything more than I gave you at the last meeting.
Okay, so I was trying to, I was looking at some of my old notes and stuff on, I was trying, it just seems like it's taking so long, and we had okayed it on April first, two thousand thirteen, to go ahead with it, and here it's like fourteen months later, and we still haven't done anything with it. And I, there's something here for this year, the surveys were going to be out by February fifteenth, and then they were going to be done by March fifteenth, and then a preliminary report by April fifteenth. That was six weeks ago.
Yep.
So then what happened after that?
Well, as I told you when I put that together, that when we tried to, and I was delayed in getting my review done on all the education, special certifications and those kind of things, we got that in, we reviewed it with the staff. As part of our process, because of my delay in that process, that backed us up in the queue with Springs did with the other clients that they were working with, so we met a couple of weeks ago, we had discussion with the entire staff and myself, as far as trying to verify the different types of employee groups and areas, and so as far as I know, they have that out in the process right now.
And they don't have a completion date at all?
I believe she was looking at, when we did that, about three weeks to, to get data in, and so we should have something in the latter part of June.
Latter part of June?
Latter part of June, I believe.
I've never seen a, you know, I was through a couple of these studies myself, and it only took like three months, so I just...
But you didn't go through all the job, job description reviews, quite to the extent...
One of the times we did, so...
Okay, but the last time in oh-seven, that was not even part of the, the process?
Actually, the first time I went through it, we had to make them up because there weren't any job descriptions, so that was even more work, but...
When the last, the staff and I had it on for discussion with Ann, with a conference call, trying to take a look at it, is that we've got obviously some different areas as we try to take a look at the cities that are going to be used in the process, because not many of our neighbors have wastewater plants like we do, a number of the out-states do, but not all of the metropolitan. The area with municipal golf courses, not everybody has that. Bruce has a specific area in electric with his linemen that not every city has, and so Ann's been working trying to pull together and develop that list and to do the survey work.
The last meeting in June, we'll have it?
I don't know, there'll be at the last meeting, but we should have the results, I'm hoping, the last part of June. We'll have it in time so that we can look at that here mid-year, and then take a look at where we go budget-wise.
Anything else?
Well, I was looking at the golf course financials, and they're really hard to look at. Did they say anything about why... Did they say anything about why in fertilizer and chemicals, there's almost 11,000 negative in the, that's an expense category? So it like throws off the bottom lines. You know, you know they're off 11,000 at least, you know. Did they say anything about that at all?
Well, you're looking at last month's stuff, Pat. And we just had a meeting last week, so I can't respond to it.
Well, it was like that in March, too.
I don't recall, there didn't seem to be any concern by the board on any of the current financial stuff. I mean, we go through it line item by line item, so I don't know why, where you were able to notice this. And there could have been that it was brought up, but like I said, this was two meetings ago, so I can't.
Yeah, with March and April, it was like that. And I suppose I noticed things more because I used to do that statement, so.
Right.
You know, and then the, there's a lot of like cost of goods that are, you know, it's off again.
I know that Wade's working with Patty still. There's some, there's some accounting line items that need to be addressed, and it was, they're trying to figure out why some of those. Mike, maybe you can talk to it on it a little bit, too.
That's exactly, Patty and Wade and the staff are trying to get that figured out. It hasn't gotten unnoticed, and it just doesn't go by, and we just ignore it. They're in the process of trying to work through the software and how Wade and Kurt have done it, and trying to get a resolution so that we can get that cleaned up. It is not done at the present time.
It was going on last year, too. Remember, I asked last year?
I understand.
Yeah, I think we solved it last year, though. At the end of the year, it did get solved through the inventory process, and that could very well be where the discrepancy is, if Jeff has inventory that hasn't been received yet, or, but he's paid for to lock in on a price, or, I don't know. I can't answer anything, I'm just throwing out ideas. But I do remember that same issue being brought up last year, and in July or August, and by September or October, when they wrapped up the golf season, it was, it was rectified, so.
I'll ask Patty to have a response at the next meeting so that she can clarify what that issue is.
And I think also should be noted is that we did hire two new people with the city, and I, and so even though the plan was to have someone from the city go over there and help them out, it hasn't happened yet because we were short.
Starts Thursday.
Yeah, so they're gonna start that. So hopefully, some of those inventory cost of goods issues should get resolved, along with the cash drawers issues and things like that, so.
Bad, like when you compare year to year, you don't know, oh, what was happening last year, and now it's, it's just hard to.
Well, especially with the golf course. Nothing's gonna match up, depending on weather and different revenues and everything else, so.
They used to match up perfectly.
But weather, then, Pat.
Anything else? David?
Yeah, has Cedar Lake done anything yet?
I have nothing. I have that on my list this week to check, to make sure that I've got some idea where it's at before I head out of town next week.
Anything on the armory? Did we get back to them with all the requirements that we have?
Ken and I are in the process of developing the letter that, going back through the entire file, to pull together all of the historical documents that we can include in that letter. In fact, we met on it today. A lot of stuff to look through.
Well, it's better to do it right and get that thing resolved.
If you remember, we gave you that summary back in December when we went over the issue. And so it's going back, trying to craft the changes that have occurred, and to have the supporting documents with what occurred in each of those different transactions, to be able to have that summary in front of them, and that we do it right the first time. But no, we're hoping to have that, I think, by the end of this week, first of next week, for the mayor's signature to send to Congressman Walz's office.
Is there a date, Dave, for the next Cedar Lake?
No.
No? No date on, isn't it each month planned out in advance?
It's about every quarter. I got it on my refrigerator, and I haven't looked it up. Sean, I don't know.
Have you responded yet to our?
No.
Are we gonna be on the deadline pretty soon?
It's in their court.
No.
Anything else?
We can wait forever, I guess.
Sean, do you have anything else?
No.
Mark?